October 23rd, 2017. Mr. Johnson, would you do the oath of office, please?
District 1, Jim Guthrie.
Present.
District 2, Jason Dennehy.
Present.
District 3, Melinda Gilbert.
Present.
And District 4, Mike Sis.
Present.
Chairman is present. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. If you would, let us stand for the indication.
Lord God, our Father, we're blessed to be here. We're blessed to live in this wonderful county and this wonderful country. It's the best one on this earth. We're so thankful for these blessings. We pray that you'll be with our men and women in the armed services, that you'll protect them as they serve the country. We pray that you'll be with the families as they're away from them. We pray you'll be with these commissioners as they deliberate matters involving the county, do what's best for the people of the county in Jackson County. God, we're thankful for all our blessings. We pledge our watchovers, guidance, and salvation. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Sis, would you lay this in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item we have is appropriate for the agenda. Any changes need to be made before proceeding. Thank you, Chairman. Your pleasure. Please move into the seats to the next meeting, next work session, please. Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a motion to move this to work session? Okay, we have a motion. You have a second.
I have a second.
All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, is any other change need to be made to the agenda?
Chairman, I ask that we move member four to the next work session.
Okay, we've had a motion to move number four to the next work session. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second. How many more want to oppose? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, the next thing on the agenda, there's awards and presentations, there is nothing. Then we have public comments from citizens. Mr. Larry Becker from the VFW Concerning Shooting Ranges.
Yes, sir. My name's Larry Becker, and I'm a member of the VFW, Prop. 60073. The post owns 68 acres of property that is total across the street from our Marvin's lumber just today. Right, if you go on the railroad tracks, cross the bridge, turn left on, if you're going south, turn left, and there's a driveway there. That driveway forks, if you go to the right, it goes up to Brian Best's house. To the left, it goes through a gate, kind of parallels a little pasture, goes through a wooded area, and then opens up on the right-hand side to the VFW property. The VFW has intended to make that a shooting range for several years ago. When we started the Memorial Park Initiative, that took all of our resources, and so we're now got that going, and so we're at the point where we want to try to move along with the range. Two years ago, we were able to get somebody in there and basically with a bulldozer, just kind of level smoothed out the left-hand side of that, about half of it. What we're in need of, and we're asking the commission to consider helping us with that, is a bulldozer to go down there for, I don't know, three or four hours and basically level, when I say level, I'm not talking about going there and making it flat, I'm talking about just making it so that we can get lawnmowers in there and keep it cut and what have you. There's a big mountain up behind it, you can't even see it because of the kudzu, but you get a lot of water runoff on there, comes onto a bench, and then down to the lower part of that range. We'd like at the same time to cut a ditch, drainage ditch, across, just under that, in front of that bench, and then back down and remove the drain off into the creek, probably about 50 yards on down on our property. So it'd be straighten out, smooth out the right-hand side, cut that bench, or cut that drainage ditch, and then if time permits, go in and scrape the top of that bench area. So that's basically it. My package includes, you know, what we're really trying to do ultimately with the range and some diagrams and what have you. So that's our request. Thank you, sir.
And the range would be for who, sir?
I'm sorry?
For the public, for all the public?
Well, as I pointed out, I was on the phone today with the insurance company, trying to work through them. Right now, it'd have to be restricted to VFW members, but anybody that wants to use the range for $40 can join the VFW or the auxiliary and then have access to it. We can work with the insurance from a liability point of view to open it up. We're trying to do that, but it didn't look like that's going to be cost-effective today.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Campbell, would you like to add anything to this? Maybe give just a rough estimate of how much bullet over time we're talking about?
Yeah, we're out of the side. We just decided a couple of pictures from that there on the table, we can kind of do a listing. The way I understand it is to the right of the large boulder, the area of interest, and depending on the depth of dirtwork, you know, we would just have to, we'd have to work with Mr. Becker and see what, what level of dirtwork we're talking about. Walking the terrain, it looks to fill in some of that. We estimated three to five days, just, just walking, but we could have, we could be different on scope with what it takes to do the work.
So long, since the VFW post is a private organization, even though it is a 501(c)(3) organization, the commission will have to determine that it would promote the public interest for this to occur, since it's on private property. We've got to take a look at that before we can alter.
Any more discussion concerning this? Well, if there's no opposition to this, I'd like to move this to the next work session. The next public comment from citizens we have is Mr. Gary Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Ashburn. Ladies and gentlemen, commissioners, before you, I gave you two packets and a sheet of paper. The first is a cancer death rate map for Jackson County. If you'll notice up in that, in the upper right-hand corner, Jackson County is in red, which it indicates that there is a high level of cancer in our county. Also, you have another packet here, which is the state cancer profiles. And in this state cancer profiles, this is the document here, this outlines, is what I've done, I went through all the cancer sites and outlined it and pulled out the ones that pertain, particularly to Jackson County, which would place them into the red category. In other words, elevated cancer rates in this county. In that one, you'll notice that all cancers, particularly females, are elevated, and on that sheet, the males are also number 11. But as you browse through this, there's one particular point that I've noticed, and this goes to community health. All of this is relevant to community health, and then what's going on in our community? What's going on in our county is the question which I ask. And so here, in the, in the cancer profiles, in the, all the cancer sites, it's elevated for males and females, but females are a particular risk. The next item is thyroid cancer. For those folks under 50 years of age, thyroid cancer is number one in the state. There's a high cancer rate of thyroid cancer. Now, there's a lot of different thoughts and professional opinions of, well, how do people get thyroid cancer? One of those areas and concerns is from radiation. Another one is from, is also from heavy metals. The next sheet there indicates pancreatic cancer, and this is in males. Jackson County is number two, is rated number two in the whole state of Alabama for male pancreatic cancer. The next sheet indicates ovarian cancer, another cancer for women. Jackson County is number two in the death rate for ovarian cancer, and number five in the incident rate. Then we go down to some of the rare cancers, non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. Jackson County is number, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 in the, in the, in the red in the state of Alabama. In other words, that's what, 56 other counties are lower than Jackson County? And this is for non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, this is for females. Males, it's not such a problem. For liver and bile duct cancers, male, number two. Females, not such a problem, but for male folks, it's number two in the state of Alabama. Leukemia for males is number four in the state of Alabama. Females, it's much lower. Kidney and renal pelvis cancers, Jackson County's number two for females. Colon and rectal cancer, both sexes, it's, I believe it's about number seven for females for both sexes. Females are number three in the state. Brain cancer. Now, this is an area where males, there's been some improvement here, so instead of number one, which was last year, it's number two this year. Excuse me. It was number one for both sexes last year, still for males, it was number, it is number one. Brain cancer. Bladder cancer, both sexes, all ages, number four in the state of Alabama. Now, at the bottom, at the end of that pack, you'll have a news article there. Hopefully, there's a news article there, and I believe I went through it and I did see it. This is a news article from 2008. It talks about the mining area up in Fabius, and as you read through this article, you'll notice that this problem has been going on for quite a while. Also, not only was there E. coli found in the, in that mine at a high rate, but also mercury was a problem in that mine. In which, by the way, I made a note down here, and I did not include it because it's several pages long. Out of several hundred wells that was surveyed in 1995, over 50% in that area, Flat Rock, Fabius, tested positive for E. coli. In other words, what is going on within the water supply in that area is contaminating people's lives. It's contaminating their water. The water, our water is the essence of our life. We got to have water to live. Now, some of these areas, county water has been brought in. That's great, but not everybody could afford the hookup, so a lot of folks are still having wells. So the last group of documents is a, is from ADM. Now, I talked to the folks down at ADM about these documents. Some of the things I thought was reasonable, some of the things I didn't think was reasonable. One of the, and I indicated on these documents, as you go through the pages, you got pictures of the outfall, where we're talking about, this is some mining areas. This is the first group of testing. As it turns out, it's got a high turbidity level. In other words, the water's real cloudy. The oxygen levels were real low in this, this body of water. And coming out of an outfall, in other words, where the water's actually being oxygenated and there's no oxygen in the water, that would seem to be a problem. So when I look at problems like this, and by the way, I've conducted biological testing and water testing up and down the Tennessee River Valley, predominantly looking for radiation, but also other hazards, as I belong to several environmental groups, and we test for radiation and, and water hazards in the Tennessee River Valley. And we also, we have written reports on health of communities. Our last report was concerning the area surrounding Brown's Ferry and the county's Downwind, which also includes us. We're working currently on a report in East Tennessee. This is Blue Ridge Environmental Defense League report. In this, I indicated in this packet here, in the analysis report, if you've noticed E. by the, by the different items that were tested, that means elevated. The chemical oxygen demand was, was high, which indicates there's probably organic chemicals in the water, such as pesticides, petroleum products, solvents, cleaning agents. As far as to say what is actually in there, because they didn't test specifically for that. But the fact is, when that, when you have the, the chemical oxygen demand high like this, that's an indication that the water's polluted and that you have pollutants within that, that water. How it's getting there, I don't know. In the biological oxygen demand, which was in, in the previous page there, it tested 18. That's bad. That's really bad, because five is indicating it's polluted, and you need to be, somebody needs to be discovering the source of that pollution. Again, I, I don't know what's causing this pollution, but it's not up to me to find out. There's a reason I'm, I'm pointing this out to y'all, and I want y'all to take a closer look at it. Y'all are not powerless. You know, I heard some comments last week, "Oh, we ain't got the power to do anything." That's not true. You're a commission representing the people of Jackson County. You have the power to pass a resolution. You have the power to get up and go over at the legislative delegation and talk to those folks over there. Because really, the power that we're speaking of does lie in the legislation. There's some problems that, and we've, I've went, I've, we've got legal advice about the, the situation with the, what exactly can y'all do? Well, you're limited in your powers. We, folks recognize that, and hopefully the people that's in here from the community that are concerned, hopefully they'll recognize that. This county commission is limited by law for what you can do. In other words, if it's an ADM regulated, if it's regulated by the mining commission, if it's regulated by the federal highway transportation authority, you can't pass a public nuisance law, because it's already regulated, governing this specific act, because ADM, in this case, covers everything they're supposed to cover, everything related to pollution within the community. But that doesn't mean they're doing their job. And, and if I saw something like this, if it was on me to be testing this water, when I see E. coli at a high rate, when I see mercury, when I hear reports of mercury going back nine years, 20 years, 22 years, I would want to be out there finding out what's going on. Because obviously, something is going on. People reporting to y'all sickness in the community. I'm reporting, and these aren't Gary's figures, these are from the National Cancer Institute's figures. There's something going on in Jackson County. Now, it could be related to health, bad diet, but it also could be related to pollution. In some of these areas, such as thyroid cancer, a high rate of ovarian cancer, breast cancer insidue, some of these cancers are related to chemical input into the environment, not just bad health, not just eating too much fried chicken. There's something going on within the environment, and it's what I want to encourage y'all to do, is find out. Go over there and present these documents, ask, ask the folks across the street. Call ADM up. "Hey, look, man, we've got this problem. Look at all this cancer we've got in this county." You've got, in just this report, one report, you got a mine up here, the outfall, that mine that's been reclaimed, and biosolids, which, which has been placed on the earth surrounding that, but I don't know. In, in another testing here, which is in this packet, there was biosolids on other properties, and the testing of E. coli in Hoag Creek did not show such a high increase. But something's going on in that mine, something's going on in the other mines, it's been reported for numerous number of years, and somebody's got to do something about it. But to say y'all are powerless, no, sir, no, ma'am. Y'all are not powerless, because you are our elected representatives. You can go right over there, talk to those people. This gentleman, this commissioner right here said, "Hey, we're farmers, we ought to be working together." That's exactly right. I'll be working together. If there's a problem in the biosolids, or if there's not a problem, let's find out what's going on, because something's going on up on that mountain. The National Cancer Institute, CDC, has said, "Hey, Jackson County, you've got a high cancer rate." So the health of the people, these folks in the room, there was more folks here last week, they're telling you there's a problem. They're telling you there's a problem. Let's show some concern. I'll help you in any way I can. I know there's other people in this community that'll help you any way we can. It's what I would suggest to you, is go up to the community, have a structured campaign to find out what the problems are, a structured problem solving. You know, I know Mr. Guffey's concerned, I know Mr. Sisk, I know Ms. Gilbert, all of y'all, and Mr. Ashburn, I know all of y'all are concerned about this. So what can we do to find out? It's what I'm saying, there is something you can do. You can put pressure on ADM to test more frequently than what they're testing. The second thing is go to the community, and let's have some structured problem solving. Identify the problems. Come up with some solutions. Find out exactly where these problems are occurring. It may not be on the, on majestic farms. There may be something else. Majestic farms may be contributing to it. We don't really know, until you get up there and do concerted surveys, in-depth surveys, and monitor the water like it's supposed to be monitored, and I'm telling you, ADM ain't doing it. So thank you for your time, I appreciate it. If you've got any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Your information that you got about Jackson County, in your research, can you break that down by zip code by chance?
We can't. That's, what you have right here is all that I have. Now, you would think that the Alabama State Department of Health, because of all the different input comes in, but you got to remember that they would, they would have it, but there's only one hospital here in Jackson County. If you went to Hamilton County and Chattanooga, you got several different clinics that may input, but all this input comes from local health departments, local hospitals, doctors are also supposed to input this, but not all the time they do. And then that goes into the national database. And if you notice, there's a timeframe difference. You know, that this up-to-date report is dated 2014, you're three years behind, because that's how long it takes to, to gather up all the statistical data and then publish it in a report.
You would just think with the modern technology that it would just be, and that we could communicate with the tract, the state area, and bring that information in, because I've always been curious as to other health issues that are related to high numbers in certain zip codes.
That's right. And if you, if you look and go online, and down at the bottom of the paper, you, you have the, there's, you know, you could just go to state cancer profiles down here, HTTP state cancer profiles, and you'll get the page. And if you'll notice, and it'll show you the information for the maps, it'll show you the, the data available for each of the counties, and it's extensive. It's a lot of hard work went into compiling these statistics, and there's different metrics and different types of, of gathering up the information for these statistics, it's all listed on there. But go there, and you'll see, and you'll notice in some cancers, particularly the death rate, there's a problem in the northeast corner of the state. Other cancers such as the ovarian cancer, you'll notice not only we are in the red, so is DeKalb County, so is Marshall County, and some of these other counties are high. They're not in red, but they're still high. So in the northeast corner of the state, there's something going on. Why is that? You know, that's the question folks need to be answering, because it's literally killing the citizenry here, literally. I'm, I'm not exaggerating, it is. We've got a high cancer rate. So it's what I'm trying to do, is spur you on, let's find out, let's say, hey, is it the problem with the biosolids dumping? Is it another problem? Is there multiple problems? Let's find out. And that's why I'm here to say here, here's the data, here's the figures. It's not Gary's data, it's not Gary's figures. This is from the Centers for Disease Control, the National Cancer Institute, and of course, I have went up to Mr. Kirby's property and videoed it. There's no problem. I mean, there is no doubt, Bryant Creek is dead. There is no life in Bryant Creek, and when there is, where it was life noticed, it's in very small areas. That whole creek ought to be teeming with mosquito fish, teeming with, with dragonfly larvae, teeming with snails, not there, not there. What is teeming there, solid waste, in other words, boil-ups. You're getting a lot of foam in that creek, and this is happening in other creeks too in this county. So there's a problem, let's find out what the problem is. Let's address it. The way to do is put pressure on ADM, put some pressure on these folks across the street over here, say, "We want to know." We elect them too. They're part of this too. Y'all are our representatives for the people of this county. Please never say you're powerless. Please, because you're not. You've got the power, we gave it to you. Now, how you carry it forth, that's up to y'all. Thank you for your time. Any other questions?
I do, if you'd like to make a couple of comments on what you would say. I don't think anybody here thinks we're powerless. I know I had a couple of questions asked me if we could, if we could pass some kind of law, and that's the reason I made the statement idea that we can supersede what ADM had already, so that, that's why that was said. As far as legislators, I'm trying to work on a community meeting right now, it's going to be in the next two to three weeks, depending on their schedule. Trying to get out of the Rosalie area, so people can kind of come, come all around and speak their mind, and we can get this, hopefully something going, so. That was just my couple of comments, what you would say.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out.
Well, you know I'm going to speak up. If I see something that I think's problematic, I have no problem standing up here and telling you about it. Been doing it for 10 years.
I mean, I don't think nobody thinks we're powerless. I just want to make, I mean, we just want to make sure it was clear, we couldn't create a law sitting here, you know, to ban something that ADM had already.
Right.
I think my words were, we have no authority. I mean, yes, we can influence, yes, we can do this, we can do that, but we have no authority to change the law.
Well, we are, we need to listen. Anytime you feel you got some kind of issues, that's our thing, we got to sit right here and listen, and like Gary said, we need to carry it further. These numbers right here was about 210, 214. Like I said before, I live in Pine Rock Valley, there was three this past year of pack rat of cats over, right there by here. There is issue. When you look up there on that chart, and you look over there, and you see Jackson County in the red, and you see all these numbers, or you just quoted up toward the top, something is, something needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, sir.
Next person we have signed up for public comment is Julie Sands.
How are you doing? We actually just wanted to take a few minutes of your time and introduce ourselves to let you know how we're making a difference in the city and county, and how our veterans go through, and saving the taxpayers some money too, in the long run. Earlier this year, a group of us concerned citizens got together at a solitary heat temple in Spay and Eater, Jackson County. This is a badly needed program for the area. Heather Carlin, who's on the way, she's one of the animal control officers, and she saw the firsthand, the animal neglect and dumping of unwanted animals and the unnecessary euthanizing of dog and cats every week. You can just take the time sometime and go to your shelter and see what's going on. There's stray animals everywhere that are dumped. We've seen, you know, I've seen the people at Walmart giving away the free cats and dogs, that no one would help them get their pets fixed or things like that. But we plan on eliminating or greatly reducing this for the community. So far this year, just us, a few people have neutered over 200 animals, which with several unwanted litters could have easily created four or 5,000 unwanted animals in our county alone. So in the long run, we, we plan on having less animal control calls, less euthanizing, more adoption at the shelter, and things of that going on. We basically, like I said, just want to come up here and introduce ourselves and let you know what we're doing, and we're here, we just started.
What's the name of your group?
Spay and Eater, Jackson County, Alabama. Yeah, and it's basically a low-income program, but we bought a van and we're transporting animals to the Spay and Eater facility, too. So, and also, another thing I wanted to add is hiring Heather Carlin at the shelter, whoever did that. It's one of the best things that ever happened to this city. She has gotten so many homes and rescues at the shelter and things like that, and Candy works hard over there too, and we foster and other, you know, things for the shelter and things like that, so. And so we plan on it getting a lot better here.
Well, thank you. Thank you for what you did.
Very much.
Okay, the next person we have on the list for our public comment is Denise Watt.
I'm heart.
Okay, okay, thank you for coming. The next person on the list for public comment is Sharon Thomas.
Oh, I'm back. Now, Gary Morgan pretty well said everything that I needed to say, and I'm glad he did, and he came along with a lot of comments that I had noted, but y'all guys represent us in, not in the city, but in the county. us, not in the city but in the county. And I want y'all to realize what he was telling you, that we need something done. And to me, as long as I've lived out where I hail in Fabius, a lot of our problems started when they did the coal mining, and then everybody from Chattanooga, Georgia, Alabama used it as a dumping site for chemicals, for sewage, for sludge, and like he said, we are still dealing with a problem that happened to us in '95. And I keep putting that out there because that stuff is still in the ground. And you don't think about it, but everything that's on top, it goes down to the river, the Tennessee River. And I worked diligently within the last two years to try to help get Lake Gunners where we stopped for this city. The county doesn't get anything from it, but I got it done, basically to restock. And, you know, that to me is detrimental to the fish when you have mercury, E. coli, heavy metals, and everything draining into that river. It's just like, well, the fish are loaded with mercury now. I get many reports to that fact, that a lot of the fish that you catch, they test, and it has mercury. And this is something that you guys have got to realize, that we need help, not just in Scottsboro, but in Jackson County. We need help to get rid of this stuff. Biosolids, sewage, sludge, whatever it may be, we need help. And it starts with you guys. But like I said again, Gary, he said pretty much what I was going to say, so he just saved me a lot of time. So just do what you can, and please, I will try to keep in touch with him, and you guys can see what you can do, because we need something done in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is old business. We don't have any old business at this time. We'll move forward to the new business. First item is motion to amend the current county administrator to include and create annual aid. We have a amendment drawn up by Mr. Porter in hand here, ready for our signature by the administrator himself. Do we have a motion to go forward with this? We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. The second thing that we have is a motion to approve the department head's recommendation for a vacant bus driver position with counsel on the AG. Do we have a motion to approve the department head's recommendation for the vacant bus driver position with counsel on AG?
How much of a motion we approve it?
We have a motion, we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Next thing we have is a motion to approve the updated job description for the MA director. And you should have that in the packet. And I would go with this and add the other items that was not on the existing one that we have.
So you did contribute to it?
I'm sorry?
You contributed to the development of this underwear.
I did, I did. This basically adds items that is not on the other one.
The certifications.
Right, right. Do we have a motion to approve the job description for the MA director?
Make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to add some discussion there, if we would. Do we want to go forward with the job posting now that we have an updated description? Do we want to add that to the motion?
I would like to add that to the motion.
Second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, number four on the item is one that we're going to table to the next work session. Next thing is a motion to approve the county attorney to draw up a contract changing the human resource clerk from temporary employee to contract employee. Do we have a motion to approve the county attorney to draw a contract changing HR clerk from temporary to a contract?
Do we have a question?
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Number six is an item that Mr. Campbell talked about, that we're going to table this until the next work session. This concludes all the items on the agenda. We have comments from the department head, Sheriff. Ms. Johnson, you have any comments? Okay, let's see if we have anything from the commission. Mr. Sisk? Ms. Gilbert? Mr. Guffey? Mr. Porter, you got anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay, that concludes everything with today's meeting. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll play it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.